I would like to testify that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ our Father, and with the great deed of justice and sorrow.
Thank you. May I receive it?
Mrs. Vance, do you want to introduce Mrs. Mountain and Mrs. Trotter?
Sure. I invited Mrs. Mountain and Mrs. Trotter. We were able to do a day of giving for the community. And some of the businesses we were able to help support in community areas that we were able to help support was Life Care, The Outlet, the Fire Department, the Downtown Partnership, Parks Board, Blackwater, the Fulton County Museum, and then we were able to do some work around the area here. I'm sure the principals will share from their perspective at the end when they're giving their notes. The board has heard me through my weekly reports how I felt it went, but both Rasma and Molly reached out to me in various ways in regards to that day. So I'd like to open it up for you to share your experience and your thoughts from our day of giving.
So for me, it started out in the morning because we did a breakfast in the morning and the admin put it on. And I thought that was so amazing that we were able to collaborate with other buildings that we haven't always, you know, we don't always get a chance to collaborate with them and see them. So being able to meet up with them and whether it was seeing them for the first time in a long time or seeing them again even though we work with them, it was great to have that. Sorry.
Good work, Kissler.
And just seeing the smiles on everyone's faces as we started our morning off. So that started it off in the morning and then we went on to our buildings. For me, and I heard a lot throughout the buildings as well, it was, there was a lot of unity. There was happiness again. Everyone felt like their cup was rebuilt. And we were able to reach out to the community in a different way than we normally do because we were able to put ourselves out there. The people saw the kids and how they were working. They saw the teachers interact with the kids. But it also, to me, built a relationship that was different for the teachers and the kids as well. They, you got to see your kids in a different light. You know, you didn't get to see them in the building where we see them every single day. It was in a different light. So that was nice to see. And it was also nice to see the teachers being so happy and ready to, oh, we're going to do this and we're going to do that and we're going to do this. So it was, it was just a beautiful day all the way around and it was refreshing to have that. And it was nice to be heard too because, you know, sometimes we feel a little bit low on the toe and pole. So to be able to feel heard and to be followed through was also amazing.
Hey, everything is what she said. But also like I wrote some things down because I'm really bad at formally speaking in public. That camera is the public. I know a bunch of you. My name is Molly Trotter. I currently teach third grade at Riddle in case nobody knows. So I didn't want to forget anything and it was more of what led up to the day of giving and also how that kind of came to fruition and what that means to me. So learn, grow, and give. That is our CSC motto. It sounds simple, but I think it's actually quite deep. Recently, Mrs. Vance came to Riddle and spoke with the teachers. There was a lot of speaking, but the most important thing I believe that happened that day was when Mrs. Vance listened and then asked, what can we do? Learn. We all have to learn, not just the curriculum and not only the students. We can learn to listen, learn to communicate better, learn to foster openness and trust across the corporation. Grow. We, we are never done growing. Like a house plant, we can't stay in the same pot our whole life. Eventually, our roots will get bound and soil depleted. We need to take care of the environment that we are in and not be overly comfortable unwilling to change pots just because that's where we've been, we've always been. Excuse me. Growing and fostering growth all around us as a unit, not just as individual buildings. So we must give. Give time, give effort, give outwardly, and sometimes give in. I think by Mrs. Vance asking the right question, having someone answer honestly, and her genuinely listening, it resulted in many of us learning, growing, and giving. The idea for our CSC's Day of Giving was, in my opinion, amazing, starting with the breakfast at the high school. Although I might suggest that maybe next time admin can join us at the tables after they finish cooking and serving us, of course. It was part of the third, I was part of the third grade day of giving. We went to Life Care where our students performed their choir concert. And when I tell you that my heart was full that day, it is an understatement. Sorry. I also thoroughly enjoyed it when my fifth grader came home talking about it. It was hot and they were picking up trash, but she didn't care. Quote, "It was fun." I'm excited for our CSC to continue with the day of giving each year. I think the students, staff, and the community all benefit from events such as these. Two suggestions for the future would be, from me, more time for planning, although if it becomes an annual tradition, a set day on the calendar would fix that issue. The second I would say would be figuring out how to include more high schoolers. Unfortunately, my freshmen, I did not leave, had the opportunity to participate. I don't know if it was just athletes and clubs, but I'm sure many other students would appreciate the opportunity. I know mine would. So perhaps a suggestion would be a Google Doc to sign up in the future that might help facilitate that. So anyway, thank you for our day of giving. Thank you, Mrs. Vance, for listening. I felt heard as well. And thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate all your comments and love hearing the feedback. Love hearing how it went and kind of nice to know that there's excitement for next year.
And Molly, in response, one of the things I think is, as the community learns what we're doing, we will have more who will respond and ask for help and allow us. This is our first time and so we were being, trying to find areas to go into. So hopefully the community will start grasping the idea and we can continue to build that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
At this time, we're going to go ahead and recess our regular board meeting. I need a motion in a second. You have a motion in a second to recess the regular board meeting, please?
Move by Mark.
Move second.
Second by Stephen. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries six zero. And we will open the public hearing on the superintendent contract. At this time, we will take a public comment on the superintendent contract. And then after this is actually an action item on our agenda at later ten. So you'll hear us close the public hearing without making any action on it at this time. Then you'll hear it later in the agenda. So just kind of let everybody know how that works. Members of the public have three minutes to speak. And we just ask for you to be clear, concise, and kind. Doesn't matter if we agree with the opinion or not. Everyone's opinion should be heard. We just ask you to be clear, concise, and kind. So any public comment on the superintendent contract? Mr. Schreiber.
Tom Schreiber. I'm Jim Starrett. Question about a five-year contract. And, you know, this doesn't, it doesn't, it applies to any CEO, superintendent. It's about having a five-year contract. Now, I've been on ag, a large ag co-op board for 27 years and I've worked with four CEOs. On school board, three years, and worked with three superintendents. And, you know, it doesn't matter who the CEO or superintendent is, you don't want to have a five-year contract. I mean, it puts the co-op or the corporation in a situation that down the road, you know, in five years, a lot of things can happen. It can be expensive for a buyout. A lot of things can happen. And as a board, you have to ask yourself, what's, what's the benefit to the corporation of having a five-year contract? And, you know, there really isn't anything that a three-year wouldn't cover, which is really the normal in the state of Indiana. I know there's an exception to allow a five-year. So I would seriously think about not having a five-year contract. Okay, because, you know, you don't want to put taxpayers in. Also, the average tenure of a superintendent in Indiana is three to four years. We've had Dr. James Halleck come in and do seminars and training for board sessions here. I think some of you probably have had him. And one reason he said that superintendents are normally, you know, three to four years is kind of norm is because by that time, they burned up bridges, people are mad at them or had other problems or financial problems. And, you know, we've got a lot of those situations here, this corporation. And one thing I've been tracking for a while, and you can find these on the Indiana Department of Education's website, is enrollment. The last five years, Rochester's lost over 170 students. And, you know, that directly affects the education fund. That's about $1.1 million loss. Neighboring schools, Caston has gained 122, Argus has gained 33, and Legacy, it's a new kid on the block, has close to 120 students. And, you know, we all know that we can't control all the movement. There's things beyond our control. But there is one thing we can control is the transfer rate and having satisfied students and parents and families. In the last year, last five years, the net transfer for Rochester is a negative transfer of 215 students. Caston's positive, 159, and Argus is right there, about a wash at minus one.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Thus, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
That's part of the problem in communication here.
Every audience member has the same three minutes. We want to make sure that we can hear anyone who wants to speak.
And you also have the leeway to extend it. You know, that whole problem here in this corporation is communication. And here, we're trying to talk about it and you're not even allowing it.
Mr. Schreiber.
So if someone else wants to yield their time to me, I'll yield my time to Tom. Okay, so, you know, that's losing 1.3 million dollars. And you may wonder why families are leaving. I'm going to try to speed this up, I guess. One of our neighboring districts asked families that come there, why are you leaving Rochester? And overwhelmingly, they say, we just want to be heard. Communication. Working with families to see what we can do to keep them here. That's not happening. You know, they try to talk to the superintendent, doesn't work. And now you also hear, you may hear that housing is a problem for not having enrollment. Well, there's not a lot of housing development in Fulton and Argus besides the people that transfer are already living here. Retention is key to keeping customers here. So how do we, you know, address this? You've got to, like running a business, you have to have satisfied customers. And that talks about, you've got to work with them, you've got to talk, ask them why you're leaving, you know, as far as the exit. Try to find out why they're leaving, try to talk with them, try to keep them here. You know, and over those 27 years, you know, I've worked with these CEOs and superintendents. I've found there's two different kinds. One that gives boards information that they need to know and one that informs boards of information that you want them to know. Now, it's very important that boards receive correct information they need to know to make the right decisions. Oftentimes, if you're given information that may be true, but may be trying to get a certain outcome. We're at the point where new leadership is needed. Someone outside the district that will bring an open, honest, and fair leadership style. Someone who will listen and address the parents, teachers, staff issues. Someone who understands how to run a business, physically responsible, the corporation and taxpayers. Someone who treats staff and students equally and fairly and not favors certain people. So the next time parents say, we want to hear you, you can say, we hear you. And I'd say, you know, know this contract, yes, to a fresh start, to a grow a great district that has so much to offer and a great recipe, place to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, Houston White. Obviously, you guys know who I am. I've been here last, since July. They have a board meeting, trying to get something done with my kid's IEP. I came in here, I had an issue. I started with Bernacki. He didn't want nothing to do with it. Went to Vance, didn't want nothing to do with it. Even though my IEP illegally got removed, I did not consent to that. I talked to Snyder. I had a very, very good experience with Snyder going through Columbia. And he said, Houston, I encourage you just to sit down, have a meeting with him, talk to him. The two things that you're wanting is very little. They can sit down and they can work with you until you get the IEP back. So that's what I did. I sat down with Vance and Bernacki, didn't want no part of it, they're not running their school that way. Pretty much said, get out, if you don't like it, get out of here. So I took my four kids to Caston and they've had zero issues. The two things I was after, I got without an IEP and they're working on getting an IEP for me. So with that being said, as a taxpayer, I don't want my dollars and I guarantee everybody in here would agree, if the taxpayers got to vote who the superintendent would be, it wouldn't be Vance. She probably wouldn't even get two votes. So I don't know what the fast food downtown is paying for Fulton burgers, but maybe board members, maybe ought to check that out and that's what her contract should be. So that's about all she can do.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other public comments?
Yeah, just one on behalf of our CTA. This is more of a clarification. Just looking at the base salary increases and wondering, is that, it says it's tied to teacher raises. Is that on a percentage or on the dollar amount?
It's based on the, the teacher increase. So everything is based on the corporation increase?
I guess we were wondering about, is that based on a step or is that based on an actual increase to the salary?
It's defined by a set number. The same set number or is that adjusted percentage for what James base would be doing?
We're having a flat.
So?
Flat.
So?
It's a flat P basis?
Flat. Okay.
Flat P based on that step?
Thank you.
Did you want me to read? I was trying to pull it up, I'm sorry. Did you want me to?
No, it's fine. I just, that was it.
Any other questions? Any board member comments? I've allowed us to accept a motion to close the public hearing. Send move.
Before you do that, I do have a question. It does not in number five, is in reference to days off. It stated about superintendent's retirement and paying out those day off, but it does not refer anything to if the superintendent retires before the term is up of the contract. There's no verbiage in there about that. Just one question.
Year five, what? Five, you're talking about the sick time?
Sick time, yeah. That's the, that's the only part that I see there where it refers to being paid out if the superintendent retires, so.
And you're asking if she, if she just decided to move to another corporation and quit instead of retiring?
Well, if she would retire in the middle of the contract, there's, there's nothing stipulating what her, you know, if there'd be any additional payout or just sick days paid out.
Are you looking at the amendment or the original contract?
I'm looking at the...
Because they have to be taken together, written together. The amendment doesn't have all of the terms.
Okay, so this would be, this would be just the amendment.
So if you go back to the underlying contract that we are amending, you've got to take those votes together to get the complete contract.
Gotcha.
So basically, the other language in the complete contract stipulates whether or not the retirement occurs mid-contract, how all of that works more.
I'd have to pull up the underlying contract, but the amendment is only amending certain parts of the underlying contract. It doesn't have all of the terms in it.
Okay, which, well, what is on the agenda is the amended contract or the amendment to the contract, correct?
Yes.
And are you looking at J on the notice or on the amended contract?
The amended.
But are you looking at the notice? There is no J on the amended contract.
The notice of public hearing.
There's a J on the notice.
Two, three, four, five, and then it has A through L.
Oh, yeah, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. It's in I. That, that's the only point that I referenced is in the notice of the superintendent's retirement.
So the notice is not?
Not the contract.
Right. The notice is just what we had to publish in order to have the meeting. It's kind of a summary of the contract?
And those are the adjustments to the contract, the original base contract that...
They are not all of the adjustments, just the adjustments that have to be published by law in order to have the hearing. So we have an underlying contract, we have an amendment, which is amending certain terms of the underlying contract, and then we have the notice that we had to publish for today's hearing. The notice you should not read as a contract because the notice doesn't include all of the terms of the contract. It only includes the terms that have to be published by law to have the hearing. So we should look at the addendum to the contract and the underlying contract to, taken together, to see what the terms of the contract are. And so you're looking at just sick leave?
Just the notice, the only thing, reference to retirement days. That, that's the, it talks about absence days, the number of absence days paid out. But if this is just the notice, then the, the entire contract was not put in with the notice of public.
The entire contract was published on the website?
Right.
And has them, or?
So on the underlying contract, if you look at number two, that's where it talks about various leave. And then on the amendment, if you look at paragraph four, that's where it's talking about those days accumulating and then the amount paid out for accumulations. The amendment shows that an amount equal to $75 times the number of absence days in excess of 150 days will be paid annually in the form of a check or 403B contribution to the superintendent on their last paycheck end of July unless the superintendent retires before the end of the year. If the superintendent retires, it will be paid out in their last paycheck. Is that the part that you're looking for? And then accumulated sick leave is in paragraph five saying, upon retiring, the superintendent of Rochester Community Schools will receive $55 per day of unused accumulated sick leave
Good.
Clarified.
Sorry, it's confusing. There's a lot that goes into it here in my list.
Any other questions? I will accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Send move. Moved by Katie.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. All in favor, right hand. Okay, we will resume our regularly scheduled meeting. So we do have four items under our consent items. We have the approval of amendments from September 22nd, 2025, regular board meeting, the approval of the minutes from October 7th, regular meeting, the approval of the minutes from October 7th, 2025 study session, and then the approval of a certification of the October 7th, 2025 executive session. Any thoughts, comments, questions, concerns, corrections, and any of these, or anyone have an objection to approving all four sets of minutes together? Any comments from the public about these minutes? I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Approved.
Moved by Kyle.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ethan. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries six zero. Next, we have our financial report. The approval of the funds reports as presented. We have approval of the claims totaling $672,713.39. We have the approval of the payroll totaling $1,070,396.87. Does anyone have anything to add or would you like to go through the fund report? Any of the claims, payroll? Comments from the, questions from the public on the claims or the payroll to be paid? I'll accept a motion to approve the financial report as presented. Send move. Moved by Katie.
Seconded by Mark.
All in favor, right hand. Motion carries six zero. We have the approval of the out-of-state field trip for the Spanish Club, the National Museum of Mexican Art, Shedd Aquarium, and Los Carmores in Chicago, Illinois. Any questions on this out-of-state field trip?
I think it's a great opportunity for kids.
Yeah, it's awesome. I love it. Everyone good on how it was all set up and written? Comments from the public, out-of-state field trip for the Spanish Club?
Just that that's really cool.
I know, it's awesome. Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve the request.
Send move.
Moved by Ethan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kyle. All in favor. Motion carries six zero. Next, we have the approval of the budget for the 25-26 school year. We have a public hearing on this prior last meeting, I guess, I believe, according to State Law, whatever that day was. I'm trying to remember. Beagle, beagle? Sounds all good?
Yeah, it was up.
Yep. Any questions on the budget? Anyone would like me to read this? If you get ready for something next time, we'll all be ready for you. Any questions from the public on the advertised budget from the public hearing as well as what is presented this evening? It's for the 2026 school year. Saying no, I'll accept a motion to approve the budget as advertised and submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Kyle.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mark. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries six zero. Approval of contract for Mrs. Vance. We do have the notice of public hearing that is attached to the agenda. Has been advertised superintendent contract itself has been on the website for a good two weeks.
In the shopper's guide and settlement.
The board have any comments or questions that you would like to discuss? We haven't already discussed. This is a five-year contract. We have always approved a three-year contract in the past. A majority of superintendents of the state have been moving to a five-year as we discussed as a board in our previous meetings. And there actually have been a lot of superintendents moving to a five-year contract given the state of the state, I guess. And so we weighed both options for the three-year to continue that as well as the five-year. And we believed it was in RCSC's best interest to present a five-year. and we believed it was in RCSC's best interest to present a five-year. Any other board member have anything else to comment? Any other public comments that were not shared earlier during the public hearing? Saying no, I'll accept a motion to approve the advertised and presented superintendent contract.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Mark. Seconded by Katie. All in favor? Raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries five one. Next, we'll move on to donations. We have the donations to Rochester Community Schools. The month dated October twenty twenty-five. We have Riddle Elementary, fifty dollars to the Kindness Club to Plant Trees, Christopher and Andy Lee. Riddle Elementary, a thousand dollars to the Kindness Club to Plant Trees, the Fulton County Community Fund. Riddle Elementary, five hundred dollars, the Kindness Club to Plant Trees, Eileen Crawford Howard... I'm sorry. Eileen Crawford Howard Teachers Creativity Class Fund. RMS, one hundred dollars, Stacy's Closet, Stephen Jam McMasters. RHS FFA, a thousand dollars, the FFA Pork Chop Dinner from Tom and Samantha Butler. RCSC, a hundred and ten dollars and fourteen cents for Corporation Need, forty-five households using the Kroger card when shopping. Very cool. Always. Very blessed to see the donations every month to the school and the school corporation. Any more comments on any of the donations? Comments from the public? I'll accept a motion to approve the donations as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kyle. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. We'll move on to the personnel report. Personnel report, I'm sure Scott has up on the board behind me, all the board members. Is there anyone who would like for me to read this in full, or have you had a chance to review it? Any questions or comments, anything in particular you'd like to go through? Any member of the public have any comments, questions on the personnel report? Great. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Katie.
It's not long, guys, sorry. Motion, motion by Katie.
Also.
Seconded by Mark. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. I was just gonna go out of my mind, my brain just goes so fast. Okay, Mrs. Vance, do you have anything to...
We'll go through our personnel reports. Mr. Hons, if you'd like to begin?
Yeah. I think since the last week, we had college go week and homecoming week, or we did. I think we sold, I don't even know, almost eight hundred meals. Had Pork Chop Dinner. It was a pretty good job by the kids. They were very good at harassing about buying tickets to the building, so I assume they did the same in the public. We had a choir concert on October first. Mrs. G and the kids did a great job. One young man that sang a solo was pretty touching to me for some of the stuff we've been through together, so that was a pretty awesome night. We made it through PSAT testing. That's always an exciting four-hour event for each grade level during that week. We had the Day of Giving. We were at Black Earth and painted eight dugouts, and then we painted some things at the park, and we went over to Life Care and did some painting and some other odds and ends for them there, so that was a pretty cool experience for us, our adults and students as well. We didn't wrap up the first quarter. We had Fall Intercession, where we had a pretty good turnout for that. We had two teachers that worked through the break to help our kids earn some of those potential points to ensure they get their credits to be able to walk across the stage. We are back from fall break. We have report cards. Hey, Kissler's programs will work. I can send out report cards.
It's Amazon.
It's Amazon. I sent it, I sent Google. I got corrected by Mr. Health, so...
I can back him up. AWS Amazon was down all day. Back him up!
It's more fun to blame Kissler. This Saturday, we have the Fall Marching Band Showcase, so at seven PM, if you want to come out, support the marching band, that'll be pretty neat. And then Veterans Day is going to be here, and we'll have a Veterans Day lunch at the high school. And then we'll be right back to progress reports, and then the fall play, and we should have another board meeting between now and then. We have had a little bit of success in the athletic realm. Coach Schaefer, the football team, won the TRC. We've got a young lady that finished eighth in the state at the state golf tournament, Olivia Bailey, and then we have four young ladies and a gentleman from our cross-country team going on to regional after this past Saturday. With that said, though, winter sports started some practices today. Time is just flying by on us, so it was a great first nine weeks, and we're looking for even more excitement as we move forward into the second quarter. Any questions? Oh, yeah. I didn't have that written down. I shot my thumb before I got to it. Our soils team got second, and they're headed out to Oklahoma again to go compete in nationals. They got second in the state. It's back-to-back years at least, if not more, that we're sending a team out there. And you learn something new every day, and of course, I asked about Vivian, which is Katie's granddaughter. Well, she went last year, and you can only go to Oklahoma once, so it was a whole new group of kids that qualified to go out to Oklahoma again, which is a testament to Mr. Pearson and Mrs. Newton and what they're kind of building with that, or not building, it's been built for years, the program with the FFA. So that's exciting news for them as well. We did win the Golden Shovel. Good Lord. Yeah, Mr. Young took the kids down to... Wherever, halfway home, I got an accident, but anyway. We did get third place in the Golden Shovel out of twelve teams. Last year, we were sixth out of eight teams, so we improved, and that's growing. They've also added an element for our engineering side, where our kids learn some of that stuff. You know, they learn the side of it, the guys who develop the things that actually don't work in the field, and then we watch the guys in the field actually make their ideas on pavement work, so that's a bull of ours as a school. Next year is to get a team from Mr. Lammers' class into that part of the competition. And E and B paving was tremendous in that. They came out for two half-days out behind the jail, practiced with our guys, and then they had our guys ready to rock and roll that day, and we did a really good job with that, so... And we are one of the small schools there, so it's a pretty impressive feat for little old Rochester. All right, is that it, Kissler? Thanks for having my back, even though I picked on you.
We finished, excuse me, I had a great fall break, but came back with a cold and a cough, so after we cheered on Hoosiers in the rain, so... Checkpoint one data has been made for RMS students. We finished with math sixty-nine percent, sixty-eight percent, and seventy-two percent. That is a good thirty and forty percent above the state right now. And ELA, forty-seven, fifty-three, and fifty-one percent, which is all twenty-plus of the state as well. So teachers and students continuing to do a great job. We had FISB Up Friday on October third, which is always a great time as well. The football boys and FCA come over, put the huge zebra up in front, and it's just a great time for everybody. Kids love coming through. Some kids run through that thing twenty times in the morning. You think they'd be tired, or if not, so they love it. It's a great time, and it went really well. We appreciate FCA and football moms and football team coming to university after our kids. We had our theater auditions, and we did just recently announce the cast for Junie B. Jones, so that's exciting for our students. We had fifth grade go-to The Dunes on a field trip on the seventh of October. We participated in the Fall Day of Giving on the eighth. Our entire seventh grade went to Rochester Fire Department and had an incredible time. They did a great job with our kids. And also got a lot of work done. It was funny, the firemen there, they said they didn't really think it through because they had the kids clean, and then they went outside and did some things and got dirty and came back in. So that was pretty good, so that was fun for everyone. Our sixth grade went to the outlet, went to Columbia, and also made dog treats and toys for the Fulton County Animal Shelter. Fifth grade went to museum, life care, and city park, so again, just to mimic everything the lady said before, it was a great day. So we appreciate Mrs. Vance helping set that up. Our junior optimist club went to the Chili Cook-Off over fall break, and we're raising money for gay seal of flags for Veterans Day. They raised a little over five hundred dollars, so that was great. Thank you, community, for that. Let's see, our fall sports have wrapped up. We had a lot of success, lots of growth. All of our volleyball teams had successful growing seasons. Our eighth grade won our RSC, which finished the season undefeated, twenty-two and zero, so that's great for them. Our cross-country, I believe the boys finished second and the girls finished fourth. And football, because so many teams had to combine, they didn't do like a traditional championship, but we have the best record, so we're going to take that as a win. Coming up, we have picture retakes tomorrow. We have a haunted locker room Halloween dance coming up on the thirtieth, which is a great time for everyone. If you want to come walk through the haunted locker room. RMS leadership team is going to present at the Association for Middle Level Education National Conference in Indy on November sixth and seventh. We have a midnight gym on November fourteenth and have our Veterans Day lunch on November fifteenth as well.
Tell me where midnight gym is.
It's a little misleading, but it's a later night activity where kids can come and do all kinds of activities in the building, so usually the pool will be open, the gym, the library, different activities going on in different locations of the building. It's usually from about seven to ten, something like that. We call it midnight gym because it's late at night, dark outside, or don't usually go to bed that late, so that's why we call it that. The kids have a great time. It's a long night. But kids have a great time. And it's raising money for student council. Yeah, any questions?
Mr. Burnett? A few things we have coming up. On October thirtieth, we have trunk or treat sponsored by our PTO. So it's the first time they're putting that on, so I think the PTO for that, it'll actually be in the high school parking lot from five-thirty to seven on the thirtieth, so everybody's invited. We're sending out that info as well. We have our parent-teacher conferences coming up on November fourth and fifth. The seventh, we have our picture retakes, and the thirteenth is our Veterans Day lunch at Riddle. Things that have happened since our last meeting. We had our third grade concert, which was awesome. The Fall Festival over fall break went very well. Columbia and Riddle students came. Mrs. Vance cooked for us. The public library came out, and the kids were making buttons. We had face painting, and Mrs. Keller came and DJed for us, so it was a good time. And obviously, painting pumpkins, big deal. Had about a hundred kids there. Thank you to the optimist club donating the pumpkins. Always appreciate that. And the library for taking time to come out and do that with our kids. Always a great success, and it was a good day, and great weather as well. We also went through our first I-Learn checkpoint, the Day of Giving. I know people are talking about that. It was awesome. I think as Mrs. Melton said, I mean, filling up the cup. That was, it was just fantastic. So we had our second graders made decorations and things for the nursing home. Then our third grade was able to do their concert again over at Life Care at the nursing home, and that was just, that's what really filled everybody's heart there. That was just really neat to see and witness, quite amazing. And then our fourth graders went uptown and did some sidewalk chalk art. So if you're at the cook-off, if they went to the Chili Cook-Off and you saw some sidewalk chalk art, that was our Riddle kids. I was proud of that. I saw it there, too. So that was really nice. And I do want to shout out our PTO. Not only are they doing the trunk or treat, but they've had a Lego family night, really growing that community aspect for Riddle, so thank you, Mrs. Melton, for, I know she doesn't want any kudos or anything like that, but it's really, really taken off and really getting the community involved. It's been a great thing. And I also want to shout out that kindness club that you saw some donations for. That's with Mrs. Scheidler and some second graders. I'm gonna, I'll talk to Mrs. Vance about maybe getting them here to talk about their program a little bit more. I don't want to steal their thunder, but that's been something they've kind of been working on in the background. It's kind of magical, and I think that'd be neat for them to be able to share that with you. And I think that is it. Anything? Any questions? All right, thank you.
Oh, your timing.
What? Keep that going, nobody wants to hear what I hear. So we completed intercession and obviously did a lot of the same things that Riddle did for that week. So we had intercession, Fall Festival. Mr. Burnett, you talked about that. Very successful event, and we'll go through all those again, but the one thing we were talking about was we think this is the sixth, maybe seventh year in a row that we've done that, and every year, it's about a hundred kids. We've had upwards of a hundred and twenty before, and I think that was the year with the worst weather, too. It was weird, but we had really nice weather this year, so it's been a good event for us. It may be even more than that, maybe seven or eight years. I don't know for sure. We'll look back and figure that out. We took our Zebra Zone winners to the airport. That was a really good trip for them. They got to go in, meet Matt Woods, who's the manager up there, and we took a tour of the airport. We got to go over and see the helicopter, Samaritan helicopter, meet the pilot and the medics that work there. They got to answer a bunch of questions. They got to get up in close and ride into the helicopter. Then we went out to one of the hangars, and they got to see, get to a plane, actually get up into the plane. We didn't take them anywhere, and we just started, but they enjoyed that. It was really cool to, you know, be pulling on the sticks and the yoke and all that kind of stuff, so very good experience for them. And then, as we're going back in, getting ready to have lunch, we had two planes land, and then unfortunately, the Samaritan helicopter had to go out, but they did get to see it take off as well, so they got to see at least some takeoffs and some landings, and a really great experience. We appreciate the airport for having us out. Parent-teacher conferences are all completed. I like to kind of bring that up just because it's an opportunity for every parent to have an opportunity to talk to their teacher one-on-one, face-to-face, nine weeks into the year, and have a good communication. Teachers have been communicating up to that point. But we had a really good turnout with that. Parents were very receptive of coming in for those, and I just think it's a great thing in terms of communicating and also building those relationships with the parents. PD breakfast that everybody else is already talking about. The only thing I will mention is a little bit of what Cassie had mentioned, and that was that we had some RMS kids that actually came over to Columbia and worked with some of our students. And that's always really neat for us to have the young kids, to see the older kids, and to have those mentors and to kind of experience the social aspect of being around those older kids. It's really, really cool. So that went really well. We appreciated that. Upcoming stuff, fire prevention. We are doing this week at Columbia. Rochester Fire Department will have their big blow-up house out, and we will be going through all the fire safety training that we do with our students, and that'll take place tomorrow and Wednesday. We have a door hop next Friday, and the door hop is sponsored by our PTO. The kids always come dressed as their favorite book character on Halloween, and we just door hop, door to door, and do a little candy thing with our students as well. Zebra Zone also on that Friday. We have our first grade concert, Veterans Day concert coming up on the sixth of November. That will be at the high school. Our Veterans Day lunch on the tenth of November. And our Zebra Zone kids for this month will draw four star cards. They will be going to Rochester Fire Department in November. They love to go there. They always have some activities set up for them. They love seeing the trucks, seeing the equipment. Meeting the firefighters, I think, is one of the biggest things. They have lunch with the firefighters, and it's always a good trip for them, so we will take those kids out to that in November.
Any questions for somebody? Thank you.
We had October sixth, we had a financial night. It was representative that comes from Mass Financial out of Indy, and we had three parents show up to learn more about government programs after school's over, whenever their kids age out, to help their families out in that area. Last year, whenever we put out there, we didn't have anyone, so I'll take three parents over, no one. I love the Day of Giving.
The guys tested out a couple new lawnmowers, see what...
The guys tested out a couple new lawnmowers, see what, see what they were gonna, how they were going to perform, how they liked them, and we did get all the schools completed with new paper towel, toilet paper, soap dispensers, so everybody's up and going with that, and we're still looking for one building tech at Riddle.
Thank you. Paper towel. Paper towel.
Meeting with our straight, our state child nutrition rep, she had us set up to meet with Wilson Turner, he is the procurement specialist for the IDOE, he went over some specs for us to get ready for review, and he did state that they were going from a three-year to a five-year cycle review. The verification process is still in the process, that'll go on through, it'll actually be a hundred percent completed by January, which is us reaching out to the households to get verification as far as their income based on paper applications. That is a random pick that our system does, it's not like we go in and handpick and we just set it up to go, and it'll feed us which households we need to notify for that. I've been meeting with the SNA, the School Nutrition Association, they're calling it the advocacy in action, and they're giving us timely updates as what's going on with federal and state levels, so they said right now, there's no immediate impact regarding getting funding for the child nutrition through October. They did go out to the state side to see how much money was on hand, and they said there is more than enough to fund past October if the government stays shut down longer than that. They also have been, at the local level, there is a bill in Congress to increase the lunches to forty-five cents more for reimbursable, and breakfast at twenty-eight cents due to inflation increase. There's also a bill in Congress to try and get the local farm to schools back, we got this grant about three years ago, it was supposed to be a one-year grant, there was enough funds to carry over into two years, and then this year they eliminated it, but they said it's gaining really good ground to try and get those local produce and proteins back from the farmers into the schools. And they also are working on equipment grants, at one time it was thirty-five million for the state, now it's dropped down to ten million, they said they're working with, and their hopes is that they can get that passed an additional thirty-five million to do that. And this is a monthly, once-a-month meeting, so they'll keep us up to date as far as where everything's at.
If I may just very quickly, I want to thank Mr. Halt for his leadership in our CTA and Brad Smith and Melton for helping with discussions, we were able to meet as a discussions group tonight, Mr. Bernack, he was part of that, so thank you for that time to sit down and just talk things through, that relationship continues to build, and I appreciate both of you being at the table and helping foster those types of things, so thank you. That's all I have.
For the board?
I have, I have two things. First, Mr. Hutter, I realize this is off the cuff, but have we been having any stop-arm violations this year?
Uh, move that term, yes. And Brian Hutter deals with that, and he's been, he's been up with that, so. I know there have been a lot of citations for him on that. I don't have any numbers for you.
No, that's, that's.
Yeah, maybe he ends up on that, I guess. Yeah, there have been a lot of, it's, it's more than I would like to say myself, so I'm sure.
Second thing to have is that, I, I realize I don't have to justify myself, but as elected official, is our duty to come into these, all, these meetings prepared? I voted no, because I was not prepared, I mean, as you could tell with my questions. There have been multiple times over the last two-plus years that I've been on this board, where I have picked up the phone and either text or called Mrs. Vance, and she, when she is available, will either respond back or call me back and answer the questions, and I know that there are continuous times where people throughout the community have done the same thing, and if she does not have an answer, she will get back. It might take five minutes, it might take a couple days, but she will get back with the answer. So I was not prepared, my fault, I did not take the time to read through the initial contracts and the notice and the amendment and all the other steps, so it is my fault for not preparing for that, but I will not vote on something as necessary as this was just to, just to vote in the board.
Well, thank you, Steve. Anyone else have more comments? Anyone else in the public have anything to add, if you're ready to go? I will hear him, Mr. Hutter.
You can have it, I'll say.
Moved by Katie. Seconded by Ethan. All in favor? Raise your right hand. All opposed? You're welcome to say.